It is six o'clock PM. I call this beating of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Posey.
Present.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Chief McCarty, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. I have the first responder casualties for April fifteenth, 2025 to May sixth, 2025. Captain Helio Garcia III, South Fulton Police Department, Georgia, April sixteenth, 2025. Deputy Sheriff Jesse Perez, Dawson County Sheriff's Office, Texas, end of watch, April twenty-second, 2025. Deputy Sheriff Brandon Ray Sykes, Columbia County Sheriff's Office, Georgia, April twenty-sixth, 2025. And Deputy Larry Henderson, Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, Ohio, end of watch, May second, 2025. And K-9 Knox, Roanoke City Police Department, Virginia, April eighteenth, 2025.
Please join me in a moment of silence for these fallen first responders. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of a commendation. Administrator Snyder.
Good evening, Board. Since last year, we have been working to expand some of the ways in which we recognize our employees for their commitment to Miami Township. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize an employee today that has demonstrated their commitment to both the Miami Township community and the employees through their leadership and dedication. This individual stepped up when called upon and has provided steadfast leadership during a critical transition for the township and their department. This time, I would like to ask Acting Chief McCarty to please join me and be recognized for his outstanding performance during these last few months. Acting Chief McCarty assumed command of the Police Department at the beginning of the year and has worked tirelessly to address the needs of the department while handling several critical incidents impacting the community and staff. He has demonstrated continued leadership under pressure and brought stability during this critical time for the department. In recognition of your outstanding leadership and unwavering dedication while serving as Acting Chief and Police Chief of the Miami Township Police Department, your commitment to public safety, professionalism, and integrity in assuming the responsibilities of chief has been exemplary and greatly appreciated. Your service during this period reflects the highest standards of law enforcement and has made a lasting impact on the department and the community.
Acting Chief McCarty, congratulations. Thank you very much. I'm sure I speak for all the Board when I echo those comments and our appreciation. Thank you, Chief. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote of consent. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. I move that we approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Moving on to new business, the first resolution is number thirty-five dash twenty-two-five. The resolution authorized the Township Administrator to execute the purchase of township signs. Mr. Schweitzer.
Good evening, Board. In your packet tonight for review is this resolution. Earlier in March, we discussed our branding efforts with the Comprehensive Plan. We also discussed how our township signage has been a basic green design for over twenty years. And then, we also discussed incorporating our township seal. It's often that we hear that people don't understand where the jurisdictional boundaries line, what neighborhood they're in, is it Moraine, is it West Carrollton, is it Miami'sburg? Due to the fact that Township doesn't have a post office, so we have varying postal codes. So, in an effort with the Board and with our street supervisor, we have put together a package to start replacing these signs, updating them to blue, which has increased retro reflectivity, and also incorporate our township seal. And due to this scope, we've found a way to save some dollars as an overall package. And then, we should be pretty good moving forward as far as our yearly sign replacement program. So, if you have any questions about this resolution, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think you might have mentioned this, but you glossed over it a little bit. These new signs will be updated to the Ohio Department of Transportation. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's in compliance with the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices with the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Mr. Carlson, you have Resolutions thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Good evening, Board. Resolution thirty-six, we have included an application for the community to help me with the progress of the park. Before I get into that, quickly remind the Board that semi-appreciation for the county senior community who are in the board, and we were looking to find a way to be under three parts of the property. During the current county that is in our new study, part of the process, and we're seeing application to the fourth apartment, we're installing Zeeville, we're getting access to Acton, we're getting parking, we're getting sound, some of the vanes being in the yard. We're looking to do a brush in the street park, under which we have a lot of products. Part of our materials plan, second phase of the building was planned for the park. Here comes the part of the street, it is a beast of some, uh, right, so they can protect the area if needed. Parks or buildings in the street, not a lot of power, but it's part of the park. Take a look at the concept plan, we request a little, because it's technical work, so we need to discuss these, and how we can support, uh, the purpose of the park. So, we will certainly be more attentive to the street, follow up, so documents, and set, we're focused, we're, uh, taking shelter, playing tables, we're down here, we're playing around the park. It's like a sport, it's a, you know, there are costs, but we're just part of it. There's other items, but still, keep it right. Uh, the resolution is seven five, versus seven, versus seven three, we also had a whole list here, and, uh, coming for these cases, we're going to, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, one case, 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 uh, one
Thank you. Members of the Board, John Roach, here, Frost Brown Todd. As indicated by Mr. Carlson, we're here tonight to discuss and vote on the consent decree resolving this administrative appeal. As the Boards aware, this administrative appeal arose from the Boards denial of the Final Development Plan, filed by A4 Real Estate Group for approval for a DG market. Generally speaking, having a chance to look at the record of that case, there were going to be challenges for the Board of Trustees in that lawsuit filed by A4 Real Estate in the administrative appeal file. Given those challenges, given the indication by A4 Real Estate that further litigation after this administrative appeal was a possibility, we looked at whether consent decree would be appropriate. The consent decree in front of the Board tonight, it incorporates the changes secured by staff to A4 Real Estate's application, some of those exterior improvements, the fencing, the exterior elevation of the building, for example. It also incorporates some items to address concerns of the Board of Trustees, namely, how this building is marketed, security, security cameras being installed and maintained at the structure, and the, what's being sold inside the store. Fifty percent, more than fifty percent must be household or grocery items. So, the consent decree before you, it resolves the administrative appeal, includes a full waiver provision, waiving any further claims against the Township, and addresses the items that I've mentioned before. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have for me.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCord, you have Resolutions thirty-three and thirty-nine.
Good evening, Board.
Sorry, I skipped Mr. Stanley.
You did.
Mr. Stanley, you have Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five.
Good evening, Board. Working with McGowan Braybenders, our Benefits Management Group, the Township was provided with the option for a no-bid contract renewal with Anthem for our health insurance. These costs were based on our previous eight months of contract expenditure on the current health insurance plan. After careful review, a decision was made to go with the no-bid contract renewal as our best option. This does provide some benefits by having the balanced blue plan provide additional monthly reporting of expenses to give the Township insight into future self-insured options for healthcare. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Now, Mr. McCord, Resolutions thirty-three and thirty-nine.
Good evening, Board. Resolution thirty-three is an appropriation amendment for Resolution thirty-five, the street signs? No. The bike path development along seven forty-one, believe that is in the works. That was tabled at the last meeting. And then, Resolution thirty-nine is an appropriation, an amendment to the appropriation for the street sign program. They were originally paired together because they were together on the previous agenda, so we brought them forward tonight, two separate ones. If you have any questions about it, I'm sure that either Mr. Schweitzer or Mr. Carlson or I can answer them.
Any questions? You also have Resolution forty dash twenty-two-five.
Yes. Resolution forty is a resolution that was recommended from the Law Director as a part of their review of our purchasing processes. They felt like we needed to go back and draw a line in the sand as to when we actually implemented Section five zero seven dot one-one of the Revised Code, which enables the Administrator and Directors of the Township to incur obligations of ten thousand dollars or less, subject to a subsequent approval of a formal, by formal resolution of a purchase order. We have been practicing this in the past, but we were unable to find a record of a previous Board where they had actually implemented this. So, it's their recommendation that we bring this to you and have your consideration for approval.
Any questions? Thank you. We've now entered in the public comments portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Miami Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the Board. Please know that this time has been set aside for the Board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The Board will not engage in dialogue at this time, and presentations are limited to five minutes each. Is there anyone wishing to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Turton, sixty-six hundred Jamaica Road, Miami Township. Good evening, Board, and others. Again, I come to you as a citizen over on the other side of the river with an issue that has been ongoing for about two or three years. I understand agricultural land, I think we all do. I understand agriculture. I understand commercial operations as well. I'm not in agreement with the one vehicle that is a triple-axle, quad-trailer, or quad-axle trailer that is on ag land, that is said to be used as an agricultural vehicle. What my question is, or what my comment is, is when there are multiple, multiple vehicles in a parking lot on ag land that are not ag. Commercial, over-the-road vehicles parked on ag land in an ag parking lot is what my point of contention is. Does it take three tractor trailers? Does it take five? Does it take a week and a half of them to be there? Or is it when there's two, one not owned by the owner of the farm? Or does it take five, six, seven? When does this then become a violation and egregious enough that we do something as a township to enforce that law? And enforce ORC five one nine point two-one, I believe, is the statute. So, it's ongoing. I think you know about it. When there's two, it's on the weekends, and then I don't know who to call. I don't think zoning is open on Saturday mornings. I'm not sure to who to call code violations, but it's abusive to my eyes, and it's upsetting my wife again as a violation inside the Township of a statute I think that should hopefully be enforced. I thank you again for your time. Appreciate it. Any attention to the matter of multiple commercial vehicles on ag land would be appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? We will now move into consideration of resolutions and motions. I move that we adopt Resolution thirty-five dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to authorize the Township Administrator to execute the purchase of township signs. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution thirty-six dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to authorize the submittal of a Community Development Block Grant Program Application for Township Parks and to authorize the Township Administrator to accept a program award. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-two-five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the proposed consent decree resolving the matter, A4 Real Estate Group versus Miami Township Board of Trustees, Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, Case Number twenty-two-four, CV six-three-one-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to approve an amendment to the appropriation of funds for twenty-two-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to enter into a contract for health insurance. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-two-five, a resolution to approve an amendment to the appropriation of funds for twenty-two-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution forty dash twenty-two-five, a resolution authorizing the Miami Township Administrator, Finance Director, Police Chief, Public Works Director, and Community Development Director to incur obligations of less than ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars or less, on behalf of the Township, and authorizing the Township Administrator to so authorize Township officers and employees pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five oh seven point one-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Department head comments. Chief McCarty.
Yes, sir. Actually, I do have a couple of things, and I wanted to bring the Board's attention. Last month, we finished our onsite for our CLIA accreditation. CLIA is the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's a national accreditation, and to earn a re-accreditation is a very high honor. We were fortunate that we did pass with flying colors, with no recommendations for improvement or changes that need to be made of department policy or just general operating procedures. Additionally, as you may know, the National Police Week is approaching, and will be May eleventh through May seventeenth. Obviously, for National Police Week, it honors the services and sacrifices of law enforcement officers across the nation. Unfortunately, this did come to light here recently with the killing of Deputy Henderson out of Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. I think this, again, reflects the dangers of the job, and I just want to be the one to make sure that I put out that how proud I am of our officers and the excellent job that they do every day and the dangers that they face. Lastly, Board, I do want to express my appreciation for the honor of sitting as the Acting Police Chief. Though, on the twelfth, I will resume my normal position as the Assistant Chief. I really am looking forward to working with Chief Nielsen. I believe that we will continue moving the department forward and progressing as an agency.
Thank you. Mr. Schweitzer.
Good evening, Board. I know it's hard to believe to think about snow in winter operations, especially when we're just getting into the summer months, but the street supervisor and I attended the American Public Works Association Snow Conference recently, and while we were up there, we attended several-day educational seminar that included receiving winter maintenance supervisor program certificates. It's definitely an achievement amongst our profession. One of the things we did up there is we networked with agencies across the nation, and we learned new techniques on what they were doing. So, we're excited as a team to review our operations and look for ways to improve our service and reduce costs. As you know, our snow and ice operations are something that we take great pride in, and it's a statement of the community, and we just hope to improve on that. So, thank you, Board.
Didn't know that was a thing, but congratulations for your attending and your certification. Mr. Carlson.
Just one quick item for Board's notification. As you certainly recall, there were several noise concerns raised around the Yankee Power Station located in Washington Township. The Community Development Department staff is continuing to follow up with City of Centerville, Washington Township, and Rockland Capital to track progress. A report on potential noise mitigation for that plant is due to come out by Rockland Capital sometime around the middle of this month. So, we are continuing to track that progress. We will report back to the Board of Trustees as we learn more. But for our residents, we are working to continue to push them to find measures to reduce the noise impact on our neighborhoods. So, if the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss, but again, want to state we'll be continuing to follow up on that.
Appreciate that proactive update, and look forward to the results of that report. Mr. Stanley, anything? Thank you. Mr. McCord.
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
And certainly, last but not least, Administrator Snyder.
Again, thank you, Board. Just wanted to note for residents, again, some of our residents, eligible residents are already receiving opt-out letters for a new electric aggregation contract. We did enter a new contract with Dynegy. If residents have questions, we do have information on our website, as well as in the letters that they are receiving from Dynegy and Trabell Energy. They can certainly reach out to either Dynegy or Trabell to get those questions answered. Again, the goal of this program is to provide an electric rate that is at or below the standard choice offer rate that is offered by AES or Duke Energy. We do know, based on the recent auction information, that at least the Duke Energy customers, they will see a savings under this electric aggregation program. We're waiting for the final pricing on the AES rate, but we do believe that, again, will be higher if you are not enrolled in this program. So, but with that, again, residents should note that they do have the option of opting out of the program at any time. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the Board.
Yeah, just to follow up with that last comment real quickly, we did get some correspondence from this week about someone concerned that the contracted rate was higher than this month's standard choice offer rate. That may occur, but that contract rate will not adjust for the period of the contract, whereas the standard choice rate may adjust month to month. There's some extent there's a benefit in that. It's not always going to be lower, depending on the results of the rate auctions. Moving on to elected official comments. Mr. Matthews.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Culp.
I have none.
Mr. Berry.
I have nothing.
I'd like to begin with what I said earlier. Chief McCarty, you stepped into the role after a brief period of being the Assistant Chief, and I don't think we could have asked any more of you during what has certainly been a challenging four months. Congratulations on the CLIA accreditation, again. We know the amount of effort that goes into that and the responsibility that you had for it. It's truly been an honor having you serve as Acting Chief, and we look forward to writing things from you in the future. I would like to briefly comment on the decision to approve a consent decree with A4 Real Estate today. The Miami Township Board of Trustees does deeply appreciate the engagement and concerns voiced by residents regarding the proposed Dollar General Market, DG Market. We understand the strong feelings surrounding the issue, and we want to ensure the community that all input was carefully considered. In light of the administrative appeal filed by A4 Real Estate Group challenging the Board's initial denial, and after careful consideration of the legal challenges presented by the appeal and the potential costs and uncertainties of further litigation, the Board determined today that the most prudent course of action was to enter into this consent decree. While we understand this outcome may not align with the preference of all residents, the resolution does allow the Township to move forward without incurring significant legal expenses and the unpredictability of a court decision. The Board remains committed to thoughtful planning and development that serves the broader interests of Miami Township. With that, I will move to enter into an executive session for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of imminent or pending court action, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section one twenty-one point two-two G-three. Is there a second? At six twenty-six PM.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We will be going to the executive session in the adjoining conference room. We will be returning to this room for the work session that follows. Thank you. We are returning to work session at seven fourteen PM. Mr. Carlson.
Yes. Good evening, Board. First item discussion, past year, we've had multiple work sessions discussing the topic of adult use cannabis as a permitted land use in the Township. Past year, we've also been following the many, many, many changes at the State House related to the topic, trying to track all the various bills that have been sort of adding little tidbits about adult use cannabis and bills sometimes that are not about adult use cannabis. But, you know, I think at our last meeting, we discussed the most recent changes, and at the end, we sort of had two paths identified for adult use cannabis. One being prohibition of the land use, and the other listing the land use as a conditional use, which would allow us to require building, lighting, landscape updates, single tenancy of a building, and certain other proximity requirements that would mirror state statute. Community development staff, you know, throughout this past year has also been in discussion with several parties who are interested in operating an adult-use cannabis dispensary in our community. Two of the parties are in attendance tonight. They've been following some of our discussions and trying to determine if this community is viable for adult use cannabis. And at the announcement of another work session tonight, joined us tonight as subject matter experts, and view them as a resource to answer certain questions that the Board may have about the land use. They also are going to briefly present who they are and some of their dealings in the state of Ohio to say, you know, why they are qualified to speak on the subject and help inform the Board about this land use in Ohio that frankly has been extremely complicated and subject to a lot of changes. So, it's okay with the Board, would allow presenters from each of these two groups to approach the podium and discuss, again, who they are, and then if there are any questions from the Board to inform our discussion, it'd be great.
Did I get a response to that? Thank you.
Thank you. Whatever, whoever wants to go first. It's kind of an open work session.
Good evening, Board. My name is Scott Miller. I'm a certified cultivator. I'm an attorney. I went to UD Law School, grew up in the Dayton community, went to Miami Valley School. My business partner Zach Weffern's here with me. His family is from Dayton as well. Our parents were in kindergarten. Our parents were in kindergarten together, so all that said is, we are Dayton people, Dayton families, and we started cannabis company here in Ohio. We are a Level 1 cultivator, processor, also have a dispensary in Cleveland, are in the process of opening additional dispensaries throughout the state, and we would be honored to have a dispensary here in Miami Township. I wanted to talk just briefly about dispensary operations in general and see if you had any questions about it. They're not typical vape shops like you've probably seen pop up in the community and elsewhere throughout the state. They're highly restricted, regulated environments. Division of Cannabis Control controls us, all of our product that comes into our cultivation facility, processing facility, or dispensary is very highly regulated. It's tracked throughout the state. Every single unit is in a state compliance system called Metric. We can't accept product into the facility or dispense it to a consumer without it being tracked in that system, and we're doing daily inventory counts every day of all the products that we've sold from. There's compliance officers employed by the Division of Cannabis Control that come on-site, inspect our facilities, do inventory counts, make sure that we're tracking everything appropriately and accurately, and we operate that way every single day. The security systems that we have to put in place are regulated by the Division of Cannabis Control. We put six-figure camera access control alarm systems into these dispensaries. The Division of Cannabis Control won't let us open or bring product in, give us a certificate of operation until they've certified the system, reviewed everything. They have full access to it 24/7/365. They could log into any of the cameras throughout the state and see what's going on in a facility. Brief rundown of dispensary operations, nobody, as far as who can come into the facility, you have to be 21 or older, or medical patients can be 18, but they present their card. You have to present your ID upon coming into the facility and into a dispensary. You're in a waiting room, and then when our team lets you, you go through another door into the area where the POS systems are, put in order together with the individual behind the counter. Those products that the individual is purchasing are brought from back of house to the front of house. They're checked by the individual behind the point-of-sale system. There's another ID check, and then the sale's completed. So, it's a very controlled, monitored, highly regulated system the state has and that we have to operate by. It's not, it's not a free-for-all. You can't just come in and have free access to product. The, as far as local law enforcement, we've met with other jurisdictions as well and other, when we've had meetings with them, they've brought in local law enforcement from jurisdictions that have dispensaries in their jurisdictions, and those law enforcement said in these meetings that they've had more issues with big-box stores than the cannabis dispensaries in their facility. Like, there's virtually, I'm not going to say there's no issues, but it's not a strain on local law enforcement to have these in the community. Again, they're highly regulated, they have to be kept up, and they, if we're not, we're subject to fines and having our license pulled by the Division of Cannabis Control. Do you guys have any questions about dispensary operations in general?
I think you said a six-figure camera system. You meant six figures in cost, not six cameras?
Correct.
How many cameras are in a dispensary usually?
I don't know the exact number in our Cleveland dispensary, but Division of Cannabis Control makes sure that everything is completely covered. Like, we have a janitor, just floor sink and brooms in there, and they may just put a camera in there before they let us open, so.
Are you familiar with the staff's proposed zoning regulations for a cannabis facility, dispensary in the township?
I've seen, yeah.
And would you, as an operator, have any issues with those?
No, we've gone through that process, conditional use process, having specific criteria in other jurisdictions, and now we're happy to work with you guys, and specific to the ones that you have here in Miami Township, I didn't see any issues.
Anything else?
So, you and I have been to lunch together. I don't know if you remember.
I knew, I knew I recognized you.
All right. With a Slime and Lasky Dog, probably. You swore for Larry Lasky, maybe?
Yeah, I did before this. I got involved in this in 2017.
Okay.
And so, before this, I was doing, yeah, anything I could get my hands on.
Yeah, we'll try not to hold that against you. Hanging out with Agri. So, where would you envision being in Miami Township?
Well, we're looking at the Asian buffet off the street.
Okay. I don't remember if I knew that. That's what I had.
Eighteen seventy-three.
Okay, yeah.
It says creator law, uh, exercise, one of those points, and, well, I'm sorry, I'm very well, first, the customer, and, you know, in the law, make sure the product actually happens, or, updated, we, uh, since old route, uh, a little one fact.
Right.
Have a briefing, probably, some kind of, um, nine, seven twenty-one, huh, seven twenty-five, um, went for all rather than that direction, um, because I think, right, as opposed to, I was, um, yeah, so, good, very excited for us to have that.
Also wanted to touch on, if you don't have any other questions on operations, the various bills before the Ohio government as well, I know you guys are concerned about that. House Bill 96, which is the governor's budget, was passed out of the House, it's with the Senate now. I have a copy of the relevant pages that you guys discussed last, last meeting, and I do understand the concern about the language in here that says you have to act before a certain date or can't act. I did want to point out that it states you have to have, in order to be qualified for the Host Community Fund, you have to have a provisional license within your, within the local jurisdiction by a certain date, and it's June 30th, 2025 here. We do have provisional license through our application process and then working with Alex, getting a few forms signed, so the township would qualify for Host Community Fund. And the House Bill 96, as well as House Bill 160, which is the cannabis reform bill, they both have mirror, mirror language about the Host Community Fund at present is obviously a 10% excise tax, and then 20% of that goes to the Host Community, and as it's written now, it says for the next five years, but I know there's a big push from the Ohio Municipal League, the Ohio Township Association, to make that into perpetuity. There's also a push in the House right now to increase that to thirty, back to 36%. So, I should fill you on that.
Back to 36, you said?
Yeah, there's a push in the House with House Bill 160.
Okay.
And House Bill 96 and 160 have the same primary sponsor, Representative Stewart. So, the language, in whatever form it takes regarding the Host Community Fund, will be reconciled between the two.
Issue two, that we all working on, you can just say, Ohio, pass at 36% going towards Host Community Fund.
Right.
As to how buildings might go, kind of, take them away.
Right.
While pushed by, you know, there's a couple different, like, a couple other versions that suggest that it might not, 20%, it's also still pushing, you know, nonetheless, staying for some period of time, what's happening, everything's how they're, you know, you know, just because of what, you know, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, I can pass this off to you guys if you want it, but there was a March 2025 Ohio State Drug Enforcement Policy Center article about it, and they got quotes from, you know, every single local jurisdiction throughout the state about how they dislike what the Ohio regulator, Ohio government's doing.
One thing to note as well, our business operations over on Springfield Street, about a mile away from here, what we can, uh, it was, uh, I know a lot of words we're, my dad was in the auto parts industry, and I was a big one of the being, we all ended up getting into cannabis industry because of the building, we had buildings for education in the right spot, we applied, and I know we get out of state and on, you know, it's a far not up. I was diagnosed with, well, it was one of the data that we hear, because, you know, cannabis, we have great, ultimately, go to back, so people either medical, you know, what cannabis can be, how it can be amplified, you know, kind of selling that and talking about that for years prior to the medical program being created, but obviously, when we went away from, you know, it changed, and now we're one of the largest firms in the state, now we're one of the local hunger operators in the state, we employ about 170 people at the end of the year now. We are under, we are expanding that facility as well, another $29 project, expanding our lab, grow facility, and we're selling, we're currently selling our product, and probably 140 dispensaries over the rest of the state at the moment, and we're selling all of the stuff in the rest of the state. We also have a dispensary under construction over on Patterson Road, you know, just, you know, just outside Oakwood, over at 91 Patterson Road, one of the banks, so we're deeply invested in the community, uh, for all time, and maybe so, maybe not, but prior to cannabis, I also started a sushi company here in Ohio called, and we've had several sushi restaurants across the state as well, so, you know, we, we're continuing to invest, invest in our community and, you know, we're able to actually be here. Cannabis is in our community, people are buying, are working for the commission and buy it back, with a lot of tax driving there, for, you know, as you did mention as well, the Senate passed, I mean, I think it was Senate Building 96, which is in toxic hemp bill, which will also help drive, threatening through taxes, through the program in regulation to state, so they did work, although slowly, on stopping the toxic hemp, the vape shops. I know, I know you guys are aware of them, because there's several in your community, but those will, you know, that stuff will stop, will stop selling, and they're selling cannabis, they call hemp, but they're selling a toxic product that's not regulated, so, you know, as we were talking for, during meetings, we're highly regulated through department contracts, they, you know, quite talented operating, set environment, like, world's great award, side of the community, you know, one of them that I think is helpful, they always welcome, many people into our facility, policy for, um, a facility that has been, you know, this is a certified world-class operation, and spent millions of dollars putting facilities, it's, it's really helpful, and now we speak out and see how, for example, I was making, you know, the process behind it helps to have a picture, so, we're always over to the sharing, and bringing new catalogs, you know, whoever's willing to take time about for it, and see if, you know, one cent dollar, so, thank you, guys.
I do have one more point to add. Regarding moratorium and what you guys were discussing last session, the state, when awarding dispensary licenses, they made the state into districts, and Montgomery County is its own district, and they only allowed a certain number of licenses in each district, and I forget the number off the top of my head from Montgomery County, but there aren't any more dispensaries allowed in Montgomery County through the Division of Cannabis Control, so it is...
One time only?
Yeah. Unless more licenses are issued in the future, but that is a far-off thing, the way, the way things are going in Ohio.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Appreciate it.
I am Matt Ryan, Director of Government Affairs for Cresco Labs. I appreciate you giving us the time here. Cresco Labs is a multi-state operator. We currently operate in six states, but we have, well, actually, eight states we have production, six states we have dispensaries. I think we have 71 dispensaries now throughout the country. In Ohio, we have five Sunnyside, that is the dispensary that we go under. We have five now, and we have three that we're onboarding. One of them was slotted and approved early on by DCC to be here in Miami Township. How that all falls out in the end, we'll see, but, yeah, so we, Cresco Labs, you know, we're one of the top three largest multi-state operators. We are a traded, publicly traded company. We are the number-one branded cannabis portfolio in the country. So, all of that is good news, which means we bring a lot of professional experience to, to the table, but I will say, Ohio, while we're not local, it was our second investment in our portfolio. Our CEO, Charlie, actually drove around the state of Ohio for about a year, looking for a place to cultivate. We cultivate in Yellow Springs. We have about 150 full-time employees. They get 401K, they get health. All of our dispensary employees, typically a store will have around 25 to 35, they're all health insurance, 401K, ownership opportunities, so these are good-paying jobs. I would say our dispensaries typically look more like an Apple Store than what you would conjure up in your head or if you've ever been to Colorado. But we try to do things professionally. We have spent a lot of time in research in medical. We partner with Temple University on the medical side of things, and that's really where we got our start, was the medical side. Other than that, you know, typically when we come to a community like in Yellow Springs, I think they would attest to this, last year, throughout the country, we had 10,000 volunteer hours from our employees in addition to the economic contributions that we make to the communities itself. We try to, we try to better the communities that we are operating in, and a lot of companies say that, and I can tell you, Cresco lives and breathes, our CEO, like, one of the founding pillars is to be good operators within your community and to make a difference. On our weekly calls, we have a readout on how many volunteers, what issues are going on in our local communities, and, and we really strive to be a partner. So, I think, I don't want to be too long-winded, that's a little bit about us, but if you have any questions about...
Yeah, are you familiar with our proposed regulations? I've only had a single, sorry, what's the term, Alex?
Single tenant occupancy.
Occupancy building, lighting, things like that.
So, typically, I do most of the, I'm usually chasing down the legislative issues, and Christian Ficarra, who's amazing, my colleague, was doing more of that. I am familiar with it, and I think he sent me off, I think one of the few notes I got was, please tell them that single occupancy is not great. So, I'm not sure, you know, there are locations that we operate in strip malls, we do very well. We, I think, on average, it's about 85 cameras in a location, so I'll have to take another look. Obviously, I know that that is something that's important or being discussed. You know, and the location that we were looking at was 8130 North Springsboro, which I actually think I'm staying in a hotel right next to this area, but, but if that were to pass or that was to be one of the contingencies, I'm sure our real estate team would very quickly look to find something, you know...
The Dayton Shops is that location.
That's the, uh, the Dayton Shops is that location, so like Buddy's Flooring, Redwing, those stores are there, is where they're talking about.
Can you talk a little bit about your understanding of the, um, community host fund issues at the State House?
Sure, um, so when the first Senate bill version came out, you remember they completely removed the community host, um, I was part of, you know, in our counterpart here, we've all been a part of those discussions, fighting it tooth and nail to say, like, look, and I remember one Senator unnamed said, well, how does this impact you, I said, well, whether it impacts us or not, these folks have taken a flyer, like, they're taking chances when everyone else doesn't want to, and to risk all of that, and to cut them out when that's what was on the table, so, I think OCAN, the association that I, you know, we all work with, and then just my own efforts, I think we, we've been able to move that back, you saw the Senate put it back, HB 160, um, doesn't get it quite back to 36%, as we mentioned, it's 20% of the 10%, now Representative Stewart has said on the record, and in public, and in private, he's not married to that number, so we are pushing, um, to move that up and get it back, but I do not, like, in all honesty, I don't see a scenario that the communities walk away from this without being funded, I think in the conversations on the floor and off the floor, um, I think that they recognize that this is an important piece to the puzzle, um, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Also, in Yellow Springs, where is your growing facility?
Oh boy, I should have written that address down, I drive there all the time.
That's okay, I was just wondering, is it on the northwest side?
You know where the university is?
Yeah.
Uh, it's literally a couple football fields from the university.
Okay.
Which I don't think is operating anymore, we lease some, it's, it's a, it's a big, um, cultivation center, um, we're in the middle of kind of expanding and revamping some of it, but it's, it's impressive, if...
So when you, the first, the university, I mean, north side of that, yeah, so when the university, I mean, Yellow Springs facility, that new one that they built, all right, I got it.
Yeah, and, and if there were ever questions, you know, I think Yellow Springs would be a good testimony to the work that we do in the community and partnering, um, and then our dispensaries are kind of located, you know, we've got one in Marion, Newark, Wintersville, Cincinnati, and Chillicothe, so, we're kind of, we're spread out.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Alex, what are our options from here?
So I think at this point, staff, uh, needs a little bit of direction from the board on what to bring back for consideration, uh, there's sort of, again, two directions, one being prohibition, the major item, uh, or hitch on that, uh, June 30th, 2025 is for the drop dead date, uh, after that, the new, uh, biennial, new, uh, uh, Senate bill takes place where after June 30th, 2025, we lose our ability to prohibit the land use, so that is a, a key decision, um, if we were to move to prohibit, we would need something in June, uh, by resolution, the trustees could prohibit the land use, alternatively, uh, we could, and this is without, really without a, uh, a timeline or, or time crunch, we bring a resolution to the Zoning Commission, and then back to the trustees that would bring language in the zoning resolution to allow as a conditional use, so, uh, that would file it as a text amendment, it would go through the normal process like we do for any other text amendment changed to our zoning code, um, voted on by Zoning Commission, and then voted on by the trustees, uh, to determine, so while we can't make a decision in this, uh, in this work session by any means, the, the direction from the board would be helpful.
Do we lose any ability to regulate it if we wait until June?
We do not, no, in discussion with Frost Brown Todd, uh, they're more than confident that, at least the way it's currently written, I'll, I'll have to pre, pre, preface everything with that in the state, the way it's currently written, uh, even if we lose our ability to prohibit, we could still place conditions on a conditional use such as building, lighting, landscaping, single tenancy, um, so on and so forth, we still can do that.
Any thoughts? I am in favor of moving forward with a resolution to the Zoning Commission to start the process to allow it, we've done a lot of surveying, a lot of thought, thought pieces, and I think the sentiment's still positive, and I don't see a reason to prohibit it, but I'm one of the three, so.
I'm not prepared.
I know that we do have some businesses, at least, that will be concerned about the potential location, so I don't know if they're concerned beyond that.
If we want to prohibit it, we need to get something on before June 30th. And if you don't feel comfortable doing anything today, we don't have, we don't have to give them any direction at all.
You've got more time.
We have time, yeah, so...
We are running out of time.
Yes, if, if we were to prohibit it, all we need to do is have it on the agenda, you know, in our typical process, we bring it forward as a resolution, it's voted and read as an immediate action, so as long as a, a resolution is read to prohibit before June 30th, it's prohibited, if we were to move forward with the zoning resolution, update, there is no timeline, um, other than that of, uh, vendors hoping to occupy.
Okay, with that, I will close the work session on cannabis, about cannabis, thank you all for your presentations today, it's very informative and helpful, uh, I don't think you want to stay around for the Sister City presentation, but you're, you're not going to do so.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Alex, I think this one is you also.
It is me as well, um, so quickly, uh, I handed out some memos, uh, to everyone, uh, at our last work session about Sister Cities, that's what this first, uh, box called Decisions is, so some of the things we talked about, uh, in our last meeting were, what level of activation engagement are we hoping to have, uh, if we were to move forward with Sister Community, Sister City, um, I have the question, beyond creating the relationship or resolution, what involvement do we have, um, you know, uh, I have some comments here, I'll jump back to in a minute, uh, and third, we discussed, uh, should we attempt direct communication with a, a Sister Community to initiate a partnership, uh, or should we enter the Sister City International City Seeking City Program by creating a profile in their system, uh, I've done some more research, uh, between then and now, trying to look into what other communities have done, I think a really good model of a, a more active, uh, Sister City Program is the City of Dayton, they have many Sister Cities, I think they have maybe eight or nine, but, uh, in general, uh, their model, they have a, uh, Sister City Committee appointed by the City of Dayton, uh, so they appoint officially members, but it is a sort of subcommittee like our Board of Zoning Appeals or Zoning Commission, um, they have their own, uh, bylaws, they have 15 to 30 members appointed for terms, and then they also have a, uh, separate 501(c)(3), their Sister City Foundation, um, committee members are automatically members of that foundation, uh, obviously we have a community foundation that could potentially serve a similar role, but this one is very targeted toward this program, so, uh, I thought Dayton's was great, uh, it's very, very well detailed, all, everything is available on Dayton Sister Cities, um, you know, their website, so their bylaws, all their forming resolutions, um, but looking at that model, I think is the conversation we'd had, is maybe being a little bit more proactive than just, hey, this is our Sister City, and then that's, that's all that is, so, uh, I put together sort of a recommendation, uh, of, of the steps that I would, I would take, or that we should take as a community, uh, we can discuss them, I'll, I'll be a little bit more high level, uh, I'll leave this with the board members, and, uh, we can discuss again, but, uh, generally speaking, I think forming a more, more formal exploratory committee is probably the way to handle this, uh, you know, having a full Sister City Committee, we probably should have representatives from all of the groups that are listed A through H, uh, but exploratory committee could certainly, uh, take the initial steps to, uh, as listed number two, define the goals and objectives, what are we really hoping to get out of this program, uh, in more detail, who should be involved, uh, and articulate, again, what do we want to do, cultural exchanges, economic development, educational partnerships, so on and so forth, uh, and then, uh, would recommend that that group spend some time researching potential Sister Communities, uh, I, I did a lot of research on what other groups have looked for while trying to find a Sister Community, uh, some of them listed here, they look for similar, similar industries or economics, if a community has a really defining industry, finding someone in a comparable, uh, situation, B, partnering with a community that has existing Sister Communities, this is one we had talked about briefly, uh, while we are inexperienced in this arena, there are other people who do this and have an idea of what they are hoping for in Sister Community, uh, C, existing connections and relationships, is one we've talked about quite a bit, uh, do we have a business that is from another country or rooted in another community that serves as sort of a natural connection, uh, and D, I think really importantly, geography, uh, finding a community that's a suburb of a major city, finding a community that has, you know, 30-ish thousand people, things that are similarities between our, our communities, uh, and then I would have the, the exploratory committee ultimately report back to the Board of Trustees, uh, this is when the, the more formalized, uh, portion of the, um, process would take place, we've identified the communities, we have an idea of goals, uh, the Board of Trustees could then more formally authorize, uh, reaching out to potential Sister Communities to make that partnership, uh, and bring that back to formalization, ultimately, I think the easy part is the formalization, uh, basically you pay a $600 membership fee to SCI, Sister Cities International, and you pass a resolution that says, yes, we are a Sister City with X Community, uh, so five there, like I said, is sort of the easy part, I think getting to five, and then beyond five, uh, really are the, the difficult steps here, um, so quickly, kind of turning it back over to the board, uh, you know, I listed out a couple of my initial thoughts on who an exploratory committee may, uh, be made up of, uh, but again, uh, I think that committee can do some of this work initially, if that's something the board is interested in, in learning about, um, I can also come back maybe with specific names, or you can contact me individually with specific names to make this committee, I don't think it has to be a formal process to make an exploratory committee, we can sort of have a, um, you know, band of interested individuals who just do this together, um, so, any initial thoughts, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I think the exploratory committee is a good idea, because I would guess that the success of the relationship is dependent upon the constituents that participate, and this is a good one to drive a lot of interest, so I think this is a good idea. That one?
Which, which one?
I think that's as much direction as you need, unless you would like anything else?
That sounds good, no, I'll circulate, uh, an initial, uh, list, maybe independently to each trustee of some initial names, and again, um, welcome any, any suggestions that you all have, uh, and some initial contacts, I'll put together sort of a scope of, uh, work, circulate that as well, but appreciate the feedback.
Great, I'll make a motion to adjourn the work session at 7:50, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
I hereby adjourn this meeting at 7:51, thank you.